As you know, I think folks remember three or four weeks ago, they opened up some, some mobile test sites down there. Those test sites absorbed a lot of the stock, the back stock that they had in the picture. So, uh, we're still hoping to get those in, that order still stands as soon as we get the call. We're on our way to calling to get those tests, we have them in place. And again, emails have done out, the parents, the hopefully parents have remembered to send back that information if they would like their children to participate. If they have symptoms, signs of symptoms in school. Uh, when we get the tests, we'll send them out and remind the folks that they got it out here and we'll put this, this system in place. And then lastly, uh, I want us, I'm not going to speak to COVID because I'm afraid if I speak to it. Right now, it's a really good place, I'll tell you that. We've experienced a bump a couple of weeks ago, I think everyone recognizes that. We put out the projections in place, uh, that bump has dissipated. And right now, um, as I said, things are really going well in school as far as COVID is concerned. And we continue to keep our precautions and protocols in place and they seem to be working effectively. Doesn't mean it's not going to spike at any given time, but at this current moment, uh, they continue to work. Lastly, um, enrollment, so we've heard a lot of conversations that are public input, um, tonight. And we've heard some folks at the last meeting, um, and I've actually had several emails over the last month, uh, we got enrollment. And so first, to start off, the slide that I showed, um, was pointed out to me that the October enrollment that we showed was pre-K to 12. In the NSDEC, uh, one that was up there is only K to 12. So I appreciate that, uh, that push and understanding there is not, was not so the apples to apples there, but the apples to oranges. The point in the slide, more importantly, was that NSDEC has done a pretty good job at projecting our enrollment. And it continues to do a good job of projecting our enrollment. But to be truly transparent, because we've had so many requests for enrollment information. Uh, this afternoon, uh, three o'clock on our website, on our main page, under the school board, we put an enrollment tab. And on there, you can find NSDEC reports as well as our October 1 enrollment for the past, I believe, three, if not four years. Again, the slide last week was not to say that NSDEC is spot on or enrollment is, is this, and there's no shell game going on here. We report on enrollment October 1st to the Tavam of Education. The Tavam of Education takes that enrollment, they turn that enrollment to average day membership, which is used to, to calculate adequacy aid, which is something we do not receive here, we go into another time. The adequacy or A D M, average day membership is not a lot. NSDEC does projection, looking at their projections over the last several years. Their projections seem to be pretty consistent and have us in a, in a space that looks like we continue to maintain our enrollment. I didn't say we went up 10, I didn't say we went down 10, so it looks like we continue to be, um, steady in our enrollment. So again, that information's on the website, it's all gathered together, it was there previously. We went and pulled it all up because we had so many questions on enrollment and it can be found on the front page, school board, enrollment, it is all there. And I think, unless there's any questions from the board?
Questions?
And I did put a copy of that, what's that documentation that's there in front of me, just in case you need it.
Uh, board topics. So, things on your mind, communication you're hearing from citizens, reflections back on past meetings. What are some things, we've had sort of general discussion rolling through our meetings, um, up until tonight, so we're going to try the, this is our time. It's our meeting in public, what are, what are some things you're hearing, concerns, um, tend to come up first? Or if you're hearing good things from citizens and taxpayers, that's also nice to hear as well. Um, you know, I'll kick it off, I got a few, but floor is yours. Um, so, one of the, one of the things that, um, in the meetings past, I've stated my opinion on, um, preference for masks in the school. Um, I think, uh, yeah, just to share the board, meaning if you listen in, heard from a handful of parents on really wanting to see the masks. Um, but I really haven't heard, at least myself, uh, I haven't heard from very many. And so it's, um, I find it an interesting experience when you're on the s- the school board. You have to be the neutral legislative body, those things are elevated, with the policy, with the teacher negotiations, the contract, you do the safe buildings. Um, so it's finding that balance point in service to what we're elected for, to balance, um, personal opinion with what's the best interest of the role. But if the community is interested, and some of the folks have been the most vocal in attendance, um, at least so far as the chair, I haven't heard from very many parents, maybe 10 at the most, um, the preference for masks. And I've heard from lots that have preference not to change the, um, policy at hand. So, I've tried to share my personal opinion about it and preference for them. But the, um, when it comes from hearing from the parents, whether it's the meetings or, uh, emails, I really haven't heard a whole lot. I was curious if, um, have, if it's the same for you.
I'm happy to, to start. So I said at the last meeting, if I'm going to catch COVID, I'm going to catch it from my kid, I'm going to catch it coming from school. Well, my youngest daughter caught COVID. And about two days after that is when I started having symptoms. And I'm here to tell you, uh, I understand that our children are, if those are young, they're safe supposedly, even though we are seeing some increase in young children dying from this. It's a really crappy feeling to wake up in the morning when you have COVID and you wonder, am I like my friend that three weeks ago at 51 died? And his wife is in on a ventilator? Am I going to be that next person? So, I can tell you that my experience is, um, sitting in the hospital hooked up to machines, getting chemicals in, made fluids, whatever it is, looking at the cost, missed work, cost for co-pays, E R visits because I had to go twice. And wondering if when I was around my mother who's 80, am I going to pass that to her even though I was wearing my mask, thank God? Because I was with her when she was in an automobile accident. Uh, I found out on a Wednesday, she was in an accident Monday, person she does is runs up and hugs her son, you know, and her car's wrecked. I, uh, I passed it on to one of the people I worked with. Um, we were only together for a half hour moving a couch, that was it, hugging a couch. And obviously, um, we were within six feet moving that, and about five days after I had it, he died. So, I understand that people think because that your, your kids are safe, and I understand that you have that opinion. But I hope that your husbands, wives, grandparents, sisters, brothers, I really hope they're safe. Because the one safety place for me is home. I can do a lot of work wearing a mask outside in the public, I can social distance, I can wash my hands. But the one safe place, your home, with your kids that you want to hug, you want to be with, that's the place you don't want to be wearing a mask when it were said. So as I said at the last meeting, if I'm going to get it, I'm most likely to get it for my kids. I'm here to tell you one month later I did, I can tell you that I passed it on, I can tell you I had, had COVID before I had any clue. It's a really crappy feeling to be living in a hospital bed wondering if you're next. And really worried if you're passing that on to somebody that's in your family that's elderly. I can tell you, three of us got it, I passed it to another, uh, person, I'm in favor of masks, it worked for the whole year, and that's just my opinion.
Yeah, I don't know how to talk that. I will say again, I, I mean, I, I also agree with so much of what Ed said. I mean, I have, um, some personal connections in the last month, a friend whose husband, younger than I am, passed away, all the same reasons. So I don't need to go through all of that. But I do concern, I, I am concerned about the residual impact of those around us while our, you know, young children are vectors and carry these things forward. So I understand that they're generally going to be safe, I'm glad that the vaccine's now available, so those who choose to get it can, um, at least for their own peace of mind. But at the same time, I think that there's a larger impact of all of this, community wise. Um, you know, we're the largest entity in the town. So, you know, we potentially also bear the largest impact if our actions and decisions don't, you know, reflect what's best for the community at large. So, I understand people's personal opinions as well and the desire to do what's best for them and their, their families. But I just think there's a, a broader, um, concern that we are obligated to uphold and, and a responsibility that we have for more than just, I don't know, just, just ourselves, I think we have to think, my opinion is, no, no, no.
Well, I think that, um, first of all, I do think, you know, the administration has done a wonderful job of, um, not only, you know, kind of sticking to a plan that they started with, but, um, it's been very even keel, it's been very level headed. They haven't tapped too hard one way or another with what is a very polarizing topic. And so, um, you know, my hat's off to all of our leaders on how they've moved through, uh, the first part of the school year. I guess, um, the only thought I would throw out is, uh, you know, we moved towards Thanksgiving break. You know, it might be a, a good thought or a good idea, you know, for your administrative leaders, to get together and reevaluate the plan going into the winter months, going into a month where we're going to be spending, you know, a lot more time indoors, looking at the differences between the two buildings, even the infrastructure differences, you know, the populations. Just taking some time over the next 30 days before we get into a deep freeze to see if there needs to be any tweaks or changes. You know, that, uh, you know, that you'd recommend as we move into that part of the season. So, I guess that's all I would have to say at this point.
Yeah, maybe one other thing to add too, uh, just, I think at a minimum, we have to, or we should evaluate what the policy is for those who are going to be out for an extended period of time, if they're impacted by this in some way. So I don't know what the, the implications are from a teaching perspective, if it's a teacher that's out for the 10 or 14 days versus a student. But do we have the right, um, response to be able to have continuous learning? That the, you know, the teaching gap is built?
Just a thought for the administration, and I mean, I know that there's two sides of this coin, masks or no masks. Those that support masks are upset for those that don't want to wear them, those that don't want to wear them are upset for those do want to wear them, it's a no win situation. But maybe there's some middle ground. One of the things I was thinking is after the holidays such as Thanksgiving or Christmas, where there's a lot more prevalent travel. Um, could we have a two-week mask mandate when they're back? Just to try to curb the potential of all the travel and airports and family members coming over to try to make us a little more safe for a couple of weeks? I understand we had a breakout in the elementary school, we went to a mask mandate, the cases have dropped, there is no new reported recently. I just hope the administration might think of something like that, that's a happy medium between those that do and those that don't want it. But most likely, after a heavy travel, Christmas, Thanksgiving, break, if there could be a happy medium between everybody, um, that would make me as a parent, um, feel a little more safe about my kids, uh, coming home. Because I really don't want to get it again.
Yeah, I, I opened the door to this difficult conversation intentionally because I think other, other boards are struggling, had to talk about it. Some boards aren't even able to meet because they, they picked a side of the issue and the meetings are being disrupted. I, it's an important conversation to have and for the, the community to hear us having it. Um, but it's, it's such a polarizing issue, the people aren't listening to each other. I think it's, um, I appreciate you all being open with your opinions, you could have passed on that and for the level of share that you provided with the long month it's been for you, your family, a lot of families in town with the outbreak. Uh, I don't have an answer I'm writing to, I said my opinion in August. And it's also, um, the community understanding that the administration runs the district, the board serves a specific. So, if somebody wants to make a motion in the moment and arbitrarily pick something, that is the right of the board to do that. It's, um, there's a lot of other factors, there's a lot of other opinions, there's a lot of other impact that has to be weighed before, um, any of us choose to do that. And so I think the way that we're talking about it is healthy, if uncomfortable, but necessary. So, um, I don't, I don't have more to add on the topic, but I just think it's really important though, we take the risk to be completely open as individuals so the community can hear it. And whether or not there's a specific action taken in this meeting or a future one, um, I appreciate the board's balanced conversation, willing us to talk about it.
Thanksgiving is so close, I know it's going to be hard for my thought of the two week, but I'd at least really love if we could discuss that with the administration. I mean, it's the first, um, Wednesday of December of really talking about after Christmas break, after, um, spring break, or whatever it is, of potentially doing at least a two-week, um, mandate just to make sure we could weed out anybody that potentially catches it and could bring it to the school and start another, um, pandemic. Uh, also, Russ, um, one of the things that, that I found is what do parents do when their kids are out for COVID? In terms of needing, um, if it's an extended period of time, still going forward, virtual or whatever we call that?
What options do they have?
So right now, if you're out towards, for COVID reasons, uh, whether that's a one day to a potential 20 days, um, it's counted as an excuse absence because it's COVID, right? So it's a, it's a medical excuse. And you have that time to make up your work when you come back, like you would with any other. Depending on the grade level, um, a lot of the teachers, obviously in the middle high school, have things posted on their Google Classroom. And so things can be available, um, for students. One of the issues with folks that are for COVID, and I think you experiment has said, I may feel great to be able to keep up my work, but you may not, and you may not even be able to open your computer. And so our expectation is to make sure that they just have the equal amount of time at the end to do that work. If they work, if they have work that they can get to and do, they're welcome to do that. They're welcome to, just like they would if they were home with a broken leg or a strep throat. If they could email a teacher and say, hey, I'm, I'm going to be home, do you have any work? Again, a lot of our work in the middle high schools posted on Google Classroom. Some of the work in the elementary school, not as much obviously, given the grade level, is on Google Classroom. My teachers are comfortable doing that and have done that, but we do not have a remote option. And so, we do not have a remote option as we did last year. We don't have one, our client have one, and we're not set up to have. So last year, again, we had personnel that were hired specifically for students that were in the remote option, which don't have that capability issue.
Well, I don't want the teachers are out, because I think we've had multiple teachers out, so how do we accommodate? How difficult is it?
So again, they're, they're, they're sick, excuse me, for COVID, they're not, because they have it in school, they got it in school, it's not counted off their sick time. Um, again, not knowing the condition they're in, it's unfair to me to say, gee, can you, you're feeling great? So, you mind plugging into your class every day and teaching away? But Ed, you can't. And so our expectation is if you're sick, you're sick, um, we have substitutes that come in and we cover your class until you can come.
Yeah, so that, that part I answered, like the sick time and such, but, but we had multiple teachers out. Do we have, do we have sufficient substitute availability to cover all those gaps?
Sure, that, that's a great question, and the answer right now is no, sometimes no, that's why you'll see an informational item when I'm talking about subpay. Um, what we found is that our subpay right now, if I don't remember, I'm talking about, uh, I'm hit on, uh, is about 80. We, we went up, I think, two or about three years ago to $85, and that was somewhat that was consistent with the area. Right now, Kearsack is at 91, Newport's at 90. We know that Subpy is a nice place to work, uh, but if it's a difference between 85 here and 100 in Newport, it may be in my best interest to go to Newport and make my $100. So, we're going to raise our, our rate up to $100, we're hoping that folks that are, that maybe live a little closer to Subpy or in Subpy that may be going to Newport, may say, hey, if I can make it in Subpy, I'll just come to Subpy instead. I will say, even though rates in those other districts are at that point, they're struggling as well to find subs at times.
I don't know if there is a way, it is with the policy B E D H. I personally would prefer to hear it at the end of the meeting. I do like the four minutes, I don't think we need two, but I'd prefer to hear it at the end because I want to hear their comments and I want to have it fresh, so we could maybe have this discussion after we hear their comments at the end of the night. So, little things that I hear that I would like to address could be addressed in the same meeting as opposed to forgetting it for the next meeting. It, I think this is very important what we're doing, I'd like to see more of this. I'd prefer to just be able to comment on some of the stuff here in the audience, if that's possible.
I agree.
Where was that? Well, we have a forum, it's our policy, do you want to move the forum, do you want to make a motion to move the four minutes to the end of the meeting?
I'd like to make a motion to move the four minutes to the end.
Can I, before we make second, I, I like your suggestion, I don't want it to be the end, and I want it to be the end, and then we, we have this discussion at the end.
I want to make sure that when we have this discussion, it's not running through public comment. Some emails or other, we have to be considerate that what we want to talk about, can we talked about? So that there's no unintentional giving, waiting, or excluding, we just want to be really mindful with any feedback. Because I do think it's important, I have conversations at, come to donuts, emails, sports nights, or empty bowl nights and things like that. So just if it's a broad topic, um, for this discussion, I don't, I don't know how many boards are willing to go where we are. I think it works, I feel it's important that we have difficult conversations in front of the public, it's part of our service, so, um, you, you want to, you just, uh...
So, what you want to do is, I think, if you want to edit your policy B E D H, which you just, um, made some amendments to at the last meeting. And so, Ed, if you would make, if you wanted to make a motion that you would like to edit policy E D H to state 20 minutes will be set aside at the, at the end of each meeting, that would be the only edit that would need to be changed. And then you can just second and move that motion. And it's an edit on policies, you're not really doing the whole policy, you're editing your existing policy. So I can edit the motion to edit policy B E D H to move the public comment to the, uh, towards the end of the meeting.
One second.
Any further discussion? The mic is in action, all in favor of moving the new standard four minutes to the end of the meeting? Please say aye, I support that as well, me and us. Um, so, with that in mind, um, I'm trying to think, there was something else. Um, I just, just to, to close the, um, COVID discussion, so you're asking for some consideration for, uh, to, not a directive, but it's something like a request to have, um, discussion with the administration on the potential around Thanksgiving or other factors. Is that a reasonable, I think that's a reasonable way to leave it, is this is what we're, we're getting here from us when the rest of the community does. And ask you to consider some of the factors, um, we have some unknowns coming with, um, our unventilated school building and flu, COVID, and other factors that could be, I understand that we're planning for. Uh, I think leaving that as a request for consideration feels appropriate to me for this moment.
Yeah, but at the end of the day, we're not responsible for managing the day-to-day activities in this school. And it's really, there's a fine line there, and I, it's difficult, you know, for us to step in and try and mandate things about day-to-day activities. But I, I feel like, um, it's a good time to just consider whether or not the plan should be tweaked in all of the coming months.
Yeah, and I think us, us staying on the appropriate board lane and asking for that consideration, to me, feels like a productive, we can say our opinions, whether some of us agree or not, is kind of irrelevant, it matters on motions and the best interest of the community, safety of the kids and the, the budget. So I think, I appreciate the willingness to have discussion, and we ask the administration, the leadership, can you consider our discussion? We can move on to other topics. Um, beyond COVID, um, other, other things that you're hearing, um, thinking about that we want to share? It's, uh, completely changing topics, it's amazing to watch the soccer teams. Like, I don't think, um, families in other communities, kids in other communities realize that you don't go to the playoffs, the finals every year. But some of them have done, done so, like those basketball, a few years, went for years, all of that, so. Aside from all the tensions, all the unknown of the current time, and, and everybody is worn out, there are still some bright spots. And happens to involve some of these sports, D Club and other things, and so, thankful for those in the moment, this is the best. For you on Friday night, and your team, and for the girls tomorrow night in the semis. Uh, we'll move on to policies. Scott, this is your time to show off your math skills.
No, 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 I will just make a motion, and we approve the policy revisions as stated in the agenda. Unless you'd like me to go through and read each policy.
Uh, maybe really slowly or golfing out. Uh, so that was a motion?
That was a motion.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Ed, any discussion?
Well, I think last, uh, time we convened, you know, I spoke a little bit to B E D G metrics and the I B academic freedom policies. And, um, it's probably also worth pointing out, if it's not obvious, that there's a lot of policy revisions around transportation, school buses, surveillance, safety, drug alcohol, drug, drug alcohol testing, guarding, uh, parent guidelines and student conduct. And when we met, I think it was a month and a half ago now, um, you know, Brenda Thomas, our very capable transportation director, uh, was part of the group, and she gave us a lot of good insight, uh, and helped us through those discussions. And so, uh, that is very helpful, uh, because that's a big chunk of what you see in front of you. There's also a number of policies on the list that are appended with the, um, the letter R. And just as a reminder, that stands for rules and procedures. And so, uh, those are not things that necessarily have to be voted on by the board, but I think it's good to include them alongside the policies that they're speaking to because it does kind of take it beyond the policy. And this is what it actually looks like in real life when we, uh, implement some of these policies. And a lot of those things that are contained in the R, uh, pieces end up in the student, uh, parent handles, so. Um, I guess that's just informational, but really just to throw it back at you all, do you have any questions about, you know, any of the policy revisions or, um? I'm sure you spent a lot of time studying them in the last 30 days, so.
It's, uh, three eighths of an inch of, uh, changes and adjustments.
You know, it can be really dry and I know very uninteresting compared to some of the things we talk about. But, you know, really, at the end of the day, this is the playbook, this is what our leaders count on when they have to deal with the situation. And so, it is important to pay attention to it and, uh, know it's there. And that's all I'll say on that.
Good, well, that was, that was well said.
Okay.
So, questions or comments? Okay, all in favor of approving, um, the second reading as presented, please say aye. And thank you for the hard work. It's the longest policy list I've ever seen on two different towns school board.
Thank you for not making me read it.
Yeah, I think everyone here is, really is. Um, we don't have, um, specific action items, so informational, the middle high school, Gettysburg field trip, the, uh, the subject matter expert has left the room, you want to give a quick?
Sure, you can, um, the Gettysburg trip has been a longstanding trip for our middle schoolers. Last year, we could not do it obviously because of COVID. Um, policy states that any longstanding trips that are organized are out of state. Uh, I can approve and disinform you of, so that is what I'm doing for policy. Um, we are taking two groups of kids, and I don't, I don't want to run into the details, if we need to, uh, but the two groups of kids going to Gettysburg, there's a group going out to Closeup. I'm not joking, they have many schools left in the middle high school.
I'm not joking, we have many schools left in the middle high school, students left in the middle high school next week, but uh, great opportunity, appreciate Sean and, and folks doing the trip, and so again, this is the procedure by policy, making you aware that I've approved that trip.
How did chaperone support go? Did you get those readily?
Yes. We have a total of seventy students and thirteen chaperones.
That's amazing. Well, thankful to the folks who quietly make that all go, with chaperones are a real challenge for a lot of districts for the things that are starting to get active. Move on to C I P update.
I don't really have an update to give you, to be honest. Uh, the only, the only thing that I would say is, um, there was a question or a comment that came up about the secondings of egress last meeting, that I just took note of, and I wanted to just kind of go back and do research, because I know we did address it last year as a board, so. Just give me a second here. So in the October twenty twenty and the November twenty twenty meetings, it came up, so there was some board discussion in October twenty twenty about the need for this and questioning whether we were good without it, not without it. Mike Dave took the action to follow up with the state fire marshal, I believe it was, to, um, get that confirmation, so he presented back in the November meeting that that was no longer needed so long as all of the life safety issues were fixed at S C S, S C E S. So that's out there in the minutes and in the archives, that, that was taken care of.
Yeah, confirmed, and I kind of crossed a couple meetings, that's a second access road for an elementary school, which is a long run issue. It's confirmed by the state, it's not a issue.
Correct.
Thank you for that one. Just a general overview, if people are not aware, um, bringing back the same project from last year, right at the elementary school. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so I can, we speak, speak to that, so we, yeah, I mean, the plan is that we're going, what, what we talked about last month as a board and got general agreement on was to progress moving forward with the plan as presented last year. And at the same time, we're working on an other alternative that will purely and only address the most critical priority items at the S C E S building. Um, we've got a substantial amount of funding, about three quarters of a million dollars-ish in, um, in federal grant money, and, um, we don't want to lose that, and it's important for us to get the H back and a minimum of the equality fixed at the S C E S, so that second option that we're exploring is going to address just those priority items to make sure that we at least have the opportunity to not lose that money, um, this time around.
You want to add?
Just for me, with the, um, sort of public relations piece, we're putting a communication timeline together, um, and so look for information which we are sure.
Yeah, that includes forums, Q and A and all of that, so. I'm still expecting the December meeting, the C I P will have a voice, because I think that December first, it's not in the intertown, December first, six o'clock here. You'll have it, the C I P will have a voice, right?
Yeah.
Great. Substitute teacher rate, you already talked about, plus, I think you covered it for the hundred dollars, um, to make sure that the support staff. Um, and then the last information I have is the student state testing results, please.
So that's Walter, Andrew, and Sean, um, if anyone wants to go first, we, uh, required by law to pay, uh, state assessments in grades three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and eleven, English, math, science, uh, not social studies. And we looked at those results, um, but Walter, Walter, you want to go first?
So in your packet, there are two sets of scores, and one, we do what we call the Neo Math scores, um, assessment, and we do that in the fall, and we do it in the spring, uh, at the elementary school, and so there will give you the idea, when we came into the school year last year in the fall, after we held for three months, what our scores were, um, and then what they were in the spring. Most of our, our grade levels on Neo Maps did very well, um, there were a couple of grade levels that did not, and, um, and it was interesting because they correlated with our New Hampshire State Assessment scores fairly well on top of that. So the bottom part is looking at reading a math for three, four, or five, and how we did overall, and we look at the number of students or the percentages that scored proficient or above. The next page on the other side is looking at a number of communities in the area, there's one community that's not in the area, but I chose, I was telling, Mr. Holden. I'm familiar with the town of Chesterfield, which is down in the southern part of the state, it's on, um, the road by Keene, if you're not familiar with it. It's, socio-economically, it's very similar to us in Sunapee, um, in that they have a population that, they have a lake just like we do, with wealthy homes around the lake, but they also have a very transient population as well. So I, I thought that was a good comparison to look at, as, as well as local communities like Granton, Hanover, New London, Newport, and then us. For some of our grade levels, we did above the state average, which was great, and some of our grade levels that we did not do above the state average. We immediately last spring, right from the test before the state assessment, we met as a group and said, what happened, and what are we going to do to make it better this year? So a number of strategies came up, and the things that we've already taken action concerning, is looking at test-taking strategies in general. Taking a test is, it's a skill, and kids need to know how to, how do you answer questions, how do you do multiple choice, how do you, also getting them used to the format. The state's test is online, and if you've ever seen, if you haven't, you can go online, see what they do. There's even one point in the, in the, um, format for elementary, for the reading section, where you have one screen that you go up and down to read it, and then you have another screen that you're going up and down to answer the questions. And if you're a third grader, this never taken a test like that before, it's very hard to, you know, there are two screens at the same time, and be able to go back and forth. So it's not teaching to the test, it's teaching how do you take the test, how do you get used to the format that's on it? And last year's third and fourth graders, they had never taken the test before, because the third grade is the first time they took it. Fourth grade, they would have taken in the third grade, but that's when we went on lockdown. So both for our third and fourth graders, they had never seen it before. The other thing is the teachers had never been, um, didn't know, there was a wealth of information that the state provides, um, so they are now on the, the site and realizing that there's a lot of practice tests that they can take. There are many interim situations that we can set up, so it's very similar to what the kids would be expecting in the spring. Uh, so that, those are some things that the, the teachers would learn right away. The other thing that we did was, in the years, the last few years, we have, if you've ever been in the conference room of the elementary school, there's a huge wall that has little cards, and we move it along, and it's a data wall for reading. We've never created anything like that for math. So now we have another pocket chart, pocket chart that we're actually monitoring their Neo Math scores, um, throughout the years, and we have their fall scores up, and then we can actually monitor how they're doing and make whatever adjustments we need to make. Which then brings us to the next part, which, we've always had literacy score in the school, we have a wonderful literacy teacher, and we have a Title I program for literacy. We've never had a math support person. And through a grant this year, we've been able to hire somebody who is our math support person. She meets with every grade K to five, um, thirty minutes every day, um, she is, she's assigned to a grade level. In the past, we've always had a win time for the L A, and that's a, a thirty minute sacred time that children who need interventions get those interventions. Now we've added a math win time as well, so there's a thirty minute block every day that's a sacred time that they get math interventions for children that we've identified based on last year's Mewa scores and last year, last year's state scores, who need interventions to help with that. We also looked at our math program, that five years, five, six years ago when it was implemented, it was a public domain program, and so that meant that we could donate, don't download the whole thing, not pay a dime for it, it was a wonderful program, highly recommended program. But we didn't really invest in the professional development that went around it. Um, and so this summer, just before school started, we had full day professional development centered around math, and getting the teachers some of the materials that weren't purchased five years ago with the math program that we now have. So those are some things that we put into place this year to see and to make sure that those math scores come up to a more acceptable rating, so. Those are the answers, I have a test question. Any questions from anyone?
Quick, I don't know, you're either passing yourself or you're doing math, um, and I should have elaborated a little more. So this is what one would call a summative assessment. And so let's think back to when you were in school, and your teacher started on the first day of school with the unit one and the math book, and you learned how to identify numbers, and then you learned how to add those numbers, and by the end of the unit, then you were given a summative assessment. That was sort of the, the, the test on the unit. So this assessment from the state is really a summative assessment. Our teachers do continuous formal, formative assessments. Formative assessments that are used and, uh, used a lot more frequently, which helps guide the teaching and learning day-to-day in the classroom. What I mean with the summative assessment as well is it's a snapshot. And it's a snapshot in time that doesn't always tell everything that needs to know. It tells, that snapshot tells that moment in time and where that student's at, um, but there's a lot of other things that aren't taken into consideration in just the single snapshot. I appreciate that Walter shared the Neo, as well as the state assessments, because now there are two pieces of data, and you try to match those two pieces of data up. But also, those two pieces of data, along with our teachers' former assessments that happen day-to-day, and their summative assessments, really takes a much clearer picture, and helps drive learning, individual learning specifically for each child. So Sean, sorry, yes?
No, I'm just throwing off, uh, so I gave you the, the six, seven, eight, and eleventh grade proficiency, uh, testing results, proficiency rates and participation rates. Uh, the good news, um, Sunapee students, again, uh, finished above the proficiency rate in every area in every grade. So that was something, um, we're pretty happy with. You know, one thing I, I like to look at, because this has come up a bit, um, the one thing we look at in school is what the proficiency rate is at the state, and how we are compared to the proficiency rate in the state. You know, New Hampshire traditionally, by most objective measures, is one of the top performing states in the nation wide, so we're in a state that performs very high in general. So for instance, I'm going to look at the math, the math score in the state, the proficiency rate is thirty-three percent. And so some people will say, oh my goodness, thirty-three percent, that is, that is terrible. Well, it depends what the, what the proficiency is based on, you know, so I give an example of a car. If the proficiency rate is just to start a car, it should be a hundred percent, you know, it should be pretty darn close to a hundred percent. If the proficiency rate is to get in the car and drive down a straight road, the proficiency rate's still going to be pretty high. I think a lot of people can appreciate if the proficiency rate includes parallel parking that car, the proficiency rate could go down a little bit. You know, the proficiency rate means you get an eighteen wheeler and try to parallel park that eighteen wheeler, the proficiency rate might be really low. And so I think those are important things to look at, and what is the proficiency rate and how is that set up? So we look at, what is the state proficiency rate? Because if the state proficiency rate is ninety percent, and we're at eighty percent, I, as a principal of the school, am going to have some serious concerns, and why are we ten percent below that level? Um, in the eighth grade math, for instance, our, it's a thirty-three percent proficiency rate, the state, uh, Sunapee High School, or Middle High School, sorry, in eighth grade, is at fifty percent, so we're seventeen percent higher on the proficiency rate than the state. Now, does that mean we don't want to do better? No, we certainly want to do better, but, um, we're looking at those scores and what that means. Um, again, if we want to, if the state wanted to have a proficiency rate that was very high, and some states have done this, by the way, you can make the test a lot easier, and then the proficiency rate is very high, but it's an artificial high proficiency rate. So again, I think it's important to look at that, we're ahead of that proficiency rate, um, again, across the board. Another thing that I actually highlighted from the middle school perspective, the state participate, participation level looked to be about three out of four students. Um, so twenty-five percent of the, the students aren't even factored into that at most schools. As you can see, in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, a hundred percent of the students in Sunapee are factored in, so every single student in the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade took this test. It's a testament every year to Mr. Cooney. Mr. Cooney is, he, he organizes, organizes our testing, we have a data, is there, there's a makeup session that is there, and Mr. Cooney's going to make sure that every student is making that up, and not, not the good test takers, it's a hundred percent. He's going to make sure that every student, because this data is very important, we want to make sure we know how everybody does. From a high school perspective, um, we're using the S A T data, which most people are very familiar with, because even parents here in the audience or community members are probably familiar with the S A T. Again, the average score with ninety-seven percent of our kids taking it, so that probably meant one kid didn't take it, and realistically, that was probably because they were out for an extended period of time, and was out on the makeup day. The average score is eleven hundred sixteen, that's the average score on an S A T. Um, that's well above the state average, uh, actually by ninety points. The average state is, the average test score in the state, and again, in a state that does well compared to the rest of the country, we're ninety points above that. Again, that's with the state is having eighty percent of the students who are typically taking that, or ninety-seven percent. Um, again, it's not going to last forever, but among public high schools, our average score was number five in the state. I'm so pretty proud of our students, um, the teachers, a lot of good things are happening in the classroom.
Can I add? Also, I'm sorry, I'm not keeping another one coming tonight. This is the progression, right, so think of, Sean just gave a good example of proficiency. When we enter kindergarten, there are lots of things we don't know. We go through twelve years, thirteen years of school with the idea that when we get into our junior year, we know a lot more. And when you look at, uh, the national assessment, now, it is our state assessment, but a national assessment like the S A T, and you see ninety-seven percent of our kids taking that score with an average score of eleven sixteen, um, that's impressive. And Sean's not wrong, it's tough to sustain that and to think that's going to happen. It has happened, that's another credit to our teachers, what they do well, um, but I'm not talking, taking anything away from what our kindergarten, first grade, and our second grade teachers do as well. That's all part of that progression, and it's a bill. Walter stated in third, the third and fourth graders, they didn't do well, but they had never taken the test before. And so, you know, first time taking a test, you're taking the test that you should have taken in the third grade, didn't do it because of COVID, last year, not there, now you're taking it for the first time. We catch kids up along the way, we had a budget conversation earlier tonight about how we catch kids up and, and the investment that we make in, get, getting, making sure that kids, when they're ready to graduate from the middle high school, they have the knowledge of things to be successful in whatever post-secondary path they choose. So just want, you know, it's, it's, it's easy to go, oh, pinpoint, look at this, but look at that, but there is a progression of twelve years that really goes into that. All these test results. Reminder.
Yeah. So, uh, I think, just after years on school boards, I think it is really important to emphasize participation rate, because if you only have the majority of the stronger test takers, then you can hide a lot in seventy-five, eighty percent participation. So I think having us at a hundred percent, the six, seven, and eight, it's, it's not possible to reflect to the community, their investment in the education, what the real scores are, especially, as you said, in a challenging district in a leading state for education quality. So I think, as great as the scores are, I think the participation rate is just kind of a big part of the story.
I would say typically the, the state participation rate is higher, so there's an expectation really, that you really should be over ninety-five percent, and that typically is the case across the board. I think it speaks to the COVID piece on why some other schools didn't put any points on us being in school every day last year, I think helps keep us a percent we used to have.
With that, the participation rate, if you lose that COVID, it'd be a different understanding, and that's a compliment, but, so. Thoughts or questions, comments from the board? Reading, reading the room. I think I want to move us on to AP manifest. Make a motion for AP manifest, and then another one for payroll manifest, please. Listen.
I'll make a motion to approve AP manifest twenty-two dash zero six, sixty-nine thousand five hundred fifty-five dollars and seventy cents, and twenty-two dash seven million eight thousand fifty-one dollars and eighty-six.
I'll second Ed's motion.
Comment or discussion? All in favor of approving AP manifest as presented, please say aye. Aye, the unanimous, second round for payroll. Second round for payroll.
I'll make a motion to approve payroll manifest twenty-two dash zero eight, five hundred twenty-eight thousand eight hundred seventy-one dollars and forty-nine cents. And twenty-two dash zero nine, five hundred thirty-eight thousand forty-six dollars and eighty-two cents.
I'll second.
Comment, question on all favor approving the payroll manifests as noted, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye unanimous. Ten diagnosed for next meeting from board chair, which I always welcome you to pile on with. Looking forward to hearing about having seventy students, thirteen chaperones.
Actually, I wrote it was fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine.
Yeah, it was, it's seventy-two total. It's fifty-nine students.
Seventy-two, seventy-two Sonopians. Yeah, so looking forward to hearing update, plus what happened for those customized, for the handful that are still here, customized things. Um, hopefully having you do a slideshow on another state championship joined by, uh, from the girls team. We talked about C I P, public comment moving, that's not really an item. C I P is going to be, um, giving us a more thorough update, uh, update on, on COVID and sort of general health, how things are going with the school year. I can't think of anything else.
You know, you might have a contract with that for a time, this is a negotiation.
Right, right.
So you're looking at, uh, C I P, I will, will bring some suggestions regarding the plan that you folks mentioned regarding COVID. Um, and then you might actually have something that they want to speak to the budget.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I, one suggestion, I might have to put to her on the spot. But, um, I think in the budget meeting today, we had a lot of really, um, insightful discussion around special ed complexity and, and the trends that we're seeing particularly in the upper grades. And I think maybe this might be a nice parlay from.
Maybe a nice presentation from special ed? Sounds like a wonderful idea.
Well, I mean, you know, we just looked at testing scores, we've talked about this being like a, you know, a progression. I think that would be a great.
I think it's a great team presentation because the insights for how much reach the special education services go beyond the non-coded, non-I P students. But also some insight from the principals, uh, the vice principal on what this really means for the currency of the day and how the school operates.
Well, I think it's an indication of how, how things are shifting and changing with the generation too. And all of the things that are impacting.
It's an opportunity to help the community understand that the, the range and depth of needs is escalating rapidly. In, in our district that may be catching up to others that have had a running start. And it's prominent and significant on staffing, budget, outlook, viability of our school district. So I think going there, maybe if I can vote for Tara to kick it off, but also get some perspective from the admin up through to you. I think would be really informative, healthy discussion over the deficit budget, that the community really understand the demands and needs that we have to legally provide here. Probably are really beyond what people anticipate in Sonoma. That work?
Great.
Okay, I tried to share a little, uh, just here. So we don't have, uh, requests to go non-public, so I'm looking for a motion to adjourn at seven fifty-four.
Make a motion to adjourn.
That's the fastest second, if you're ready. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Adjourn, thank you. Thanks for this, so much of the public.